PM. Still wait for my computer to do what it's supposed to do. I got it, it's come back to life. Okay. If you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please sign up at the sheet near the entrance door to the council chambers. You'll be called to speak during public comment section. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed in a public hearing or public comment will be taken at that time. Roll call, please.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Susan Walke.
Here.
Kip Ward.
Here.
And Mayor Don Williams.
Here.
Thank you.
May you please all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and.
Thank you all so much. We had a couple of things move from, in special order of business, that are under consent agenda. Ron had asked me to pull because they weren't noticed already or...
Yeah, well, there's some, there's some technical difficulties we had, and so items number one from the consent agenda and then numbers eight, nine, and 10, under item I, special order of business, we'd like to deal with those at a later date.
Motion?
I so move.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. And then we had a discussion about under I-11 and I-12.
In the case of those, there were attachments for each of those applications, and they were, or they were the applications that were the attachments, but for a reason I haven't quite figured out, they did not show up in your packet. If you would, if you would like to go forward based upon the recommendations from the counselors that interviewed these candidates, that would be fine, or if you would like to wait until you, we fix this glitch and you actually see the application, we can do that as well.
My question would be to Mr. Pacello, any issues with appointment this way?
Generally, I think you all like to see the applications before you actually make the decision, so it's up to you.
We received them in the last packet, correct?
I'm not sure.
No? Okay.
I don't think so, Mayor.
Well, then, I'm going to leave the council. I'm comfortable moving ahead.
Mr. Mayor, the question I would have is can the people who, counselors who interviewed share information with us on the candidates? That would be...
Sure.
Would it might be in the application, that'd be fine.
Absolutely. So Parks Board applicant, Camilla Harlock?
With that, I'd say let's keep going to...
Okay.
I have my notes and I can show this. Yep.
Well, okay, and then for Matthew Max Horton. You want to have those later and we'll do it? Yeah, okay, fair enough. All right, then we'll do those later on. Thank you very much. Okay, then we're going to shoot right to comments from citizens present on agenda and non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen, and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their times to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The mayor has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the numbers of persons present and signed up to speak. I have no sheet, anyone signed up to speak? Any, nobody? Colleen or Allison, somebody? No.
Shannon Locke. Rhodes End. We have a runaway problem in Rhodes End, and I'm not sure which way to direct it. The Tansey Ragwort is out of control, the yellow weed that's very invasive. It would be good to get a handle on it. It's kind of blown up from the county property that's between Liberty Inn and Rhodes End. When that was logged, it became quite covered with Tansey, and it's since migrated down into the estuary area across the street from the state park in Rhodes End and is, actually I have pictures of it, I'll send you at some point, but almost completely covered that over. Of course, now it's gone to seed, so it's a difficult thing to deal with, but there, I think there are remedies, and I would just encourage city council to think about addressing that in upcoming budget, or maybe there's something we can do to find out more about what the best practices are for removing it. I know other communities have similar issues. I really appreciate it, it spread really quickly, so I think we could still get a handle on it. It's a pretty big weed, so, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. So I guess I'd take this moment to ask, I guess, Mr. Pacello or Mr. Chandler, what is the city's purview?
I, I think you're talking about outside of the city limits, and so...
That's right, we never did incorporate that.
I would, I'll email the county attorney. If in fact we're talking about outside the city limits, which I was thinking it was Logan Park we're talking about, then I think I'll contact the county attorney and see what remedies the county may have for this kind of a nuisance.
Appreciate that. Shannon, you may want to contact someone at the county.
I just said something to, Shannon also mentioned that it started at the Logan Park development area, and then, but now it's in the wetland in the pond area, and that's within the city, that city-owned property, so...
And I believe our public works department does do some removal and abatement of that, so that's...
I'm getting a nod from public works director. Okay, so we're on it then. Thank you. I have nobody else signed up. Anyone who did not sign up, wish to speak? Seeing nobody, thank you very much. Okay, maybe we'll get out before 11 tonight. Public hearing, public comments, none. Ordinances, ordinance 2017-05.
Your honor, counsel, this is, well, I'm going to start with, before I do the reading, I'm going to say I, I've been notified that in section 2540, okay, 254 of the ordinance, which is section nine, having to do with the Driftwood Library. The term librarian appears, and also the term director appears. My understanding is it's the library director, not the librarian, although we have some old language that I failed to remove. So I'm going to indicate that in 254060, the, the language there, board, chairperson, and secretary, that section stays, and the word librarian that appears there should be changed to library director. So the library director shall serve as secretary to the library board and keep a record of its actions. In addition, under the powers and duties 254070, the number three, B3, making recommendations to the library director on program development, and, I may have missed one.
There's a change in 2.06100.
Can you tell me what that one was?
That was, I'm looking for it.
Oh, the Oregon revised statutes?
It says Oregon State statutes, and it should say Oregon revised.
Oregon revised statutes. Okay, so with that, I'll, I'll do the reading. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2017-05, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title II Administration and Personnel, amending chapter 206 City Appointed Bodies, adding multiple new sections to clarify appointment, rules, responsibilities, and actions of the city of, of city appointed bodies, adding a new chapter 266 Community Sustainability Committee, amending several chapters to remove redundant provisions, including chapter 208 Planning Commission, chapter 212 Building Board of Appeals, chapter 214 New Business Incubation Committee, chapter 218 Vacation Rental Dwelling License Appeals Board, chapter 220 Parks and Recreation Board, chapter 224 Visitor and Convention Committee, amending chapter 254 Driftwood Public Library, amending chapter 264 Arts Committee, adding a new chapter 268 Transit Lodging Tax Review Committee, amending chapter 304 Transit Room Tax, adding a new chapter 214 Committee on Citizen Involvement, and adding a new chapter 270 Budget Committee. Ask for approval of first reading.
I so move.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 I think it's a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank, yes.
Okay. Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Your honor, counsel, this is second reading of ordinance 2017-05, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title II Administration and Personnel, amending chapter 206 City Appointed Bodies, adding multiple new sections to clarify appointment, rules, and responsibilities and actions of city-appointed bodies, adding a new chapter 266 Community Sustainability Committee, amending several chapters to remove redundant provisions, including chapter 208 Planning Commission, chapter 212 Building Board of Appeals, chapter 214 New Business Incubation Committee, chapter 218 Vacation Rental Dwelling License Appeals Board, chapter 220 Planning and Recreation Board, chapter 224 Visitor and Convention Committee, amending chapter 254 Driftwood Public Library, amending chapter 264 Arts Committee, adding a new chapter 268 Transit Lodging Tax Review Committee, amending chapter 304 Transit Room Tax, adding a new chapter 214 Committee for Citizen Involvement, and adding a new chapter 270 Budget Committee. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you to the city attorney for sticking with this. It's been a long process to get us to this point, and thank you for all the revisions throughout that entire process. Thank you.
Yes, I agree, thank you.
Your honor, ordinance 2017-16, the Nell Scott Neighborhood Plan, although it's on the agenda, we need to continue it to the next meeting because there was an error in the terms of the Nell Scott Neighborhood Plan being provided to the council. So if I can just ask that you continue this first reading to September 25th, we can pick it up then.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. I don't need a roll call on that, right? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'm sorry, I didn't ask for discussion. If anyone wants to say something about it? No? Okay. All right. Resolutions, resolution 2017-17, a resolution of the city of Lincoln City authorizing and directing the sale of city-owned real property.
Okay, this resolution we have discussed in the past as part of our discussions concerning workforce housing, and we've been instructed to look at disposing of some properties. First, after we were instructed to look at properties to see if they were developable as workforce housing, and then if they weren't, to look at the idea of putting them up for sale. We've identified 10 parcels that, that are identified in the resolution. There has been some discussion about removing two from that list. If there, if you would like to do that, then in your motion, you would just make a motion to amend the resolution to remove those items.
Yes.
Is that 50 person Hosteller Park, are those the two?
No.
No.
No, this does not include Hosteller Park.
Questions or motion?
Question? I have a, sorry, I just, I have a motion, and maybe then we can discuss a little bit further, or do you want to talk about it first?
Would that be okay? You guys have questions, okay?
Yeah, I just want to identify the two properties we're specifically talking about.
I think I might be able to do that.
All right, go ahead.
The first property was, and this is one of the alternative motions, tax lot 061135CB100, that's the northeast Salasie Drive, I believe Counselor Hinton is interested in removing that, and I believe Counselor Hoagland is interested in removing the 1149 Southeast Third Street, which is tax lot 071115AC6500, and then, so I believe those are the two that are an issue.
Okay to move forward, Mr. Anderson? Were you good? Go ahead.
If I could ask a question first. I was also hoping to sell part of the Third Street property to pay for, to use the proceeds to pay for the parking lot for Salasie, but I'd like to ask Counselor Hoagland, or is there a partitioning of that property, or how can we accomplish both?
Well, if you were to sell that property, we would partition it because we do have a building on that, and we wanted to main access to, to the creek that's back there. So we would partition to keep the, that would be the east portion of that property. If you want to, you know, it really at this point becomes a decision of the city council as to whether or not that property is, is sold or stays.
We're going to discuss the present council.
Well, let's have a motion then, and then discuss.
Okay, I have a motion. I move to approve resolution 2017-17, but amend it to remove the property on Salasie Drive with a tax lot 061135CB100, and to direct the necessary proceeds from the sale of the Third Street property, tax lot 071115AC606500, to fund the construction of the parking lot on the Salasie Drive property.
Not hearing a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to second, discussion? Oh, yeah, you got it. Oh, yeah. Pull your mic closer, say second. Motion, second. You seconded it, right?
I seconded it, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure we picked yep. Okay. Any discussion? I've got plenty. Well, you go ahead. Well, my question is, and correct me if I'm wrong, in what I heard, you're asking to pull it from sale so we can sell it. How are you going, what proceeds are you going to use for Third then? I, I guess I'm lost.
Just pull the Salasie Drive property?
Right.
And then, oh, sorry, thank you. My motion is to pull the Salasie property from the list, and then to use the proceeds from the sale of the Third Street property to fund the necessary work that needs to be done to construct the parking lot on Salasie.
So you want to hold off selling until it, do it work, and then sell it? Or sell it and keep, or fix it and keep it?
Keep Salasie, and then move that off. Off your thoughts there. Not keep it, but keep it off the, pull it off the list so it's not for sale, so the city continues to, the city will continue to own Salasie. And then before I knew about Riley's idea about keeping Third, during our work session, we talked about that that would be for sale, and was suggested that that, the proceeds from that would, however much is needed, from the sale of Third Street could pay for the construction on that Salasie property for the parking lot.
I have a question to you, Ron. Is, is it necessary to designate where funds come from to do that?
You can do that in this motion, but ultimately you would need to amend your budget to account for the revenue and the expenditures.
So is it necessary to even state? Is it necessary to even state that, or just pull Salasie from this?
You can do it either way, if you want to...
Which is easier? What makes it happen?
If, if you put, if you put it in your motion, that you want to use the funds from the sale of any of these properties for a specific item, then, then the staff has been instructed to begin to prepare the budget amendment and go forward with it.
Good. That was my discussion.
Mr. Mayor, just a question of Mr. Chandler, if I can. Is it possible and feasible to keep one of these properties, I guess specifically sell on the for sale list, and just not actively market it until we get more information about the feasibility of that specific lot for a, in this case, parking lot?
Yeah, what you're actually doing tonight is declaring them as surplus property so that we can sell them. If you don't want us to, to proceed, if you want to declare it as surplus property, but don't want us to proceed with it, we can do that as well.
So...
Proceed with the sale of it.
So I guess what I'm, Mr. Mayor, what I'm trying to get is, this is certainly a public process of declaring properties, but if, if, so that we don't have to come back, you know, in the future and bring one of these back, for example, but not, what, what bothers me about this property being pulled off is we have no idea of its feasibility or cost for a parking lot. And at the work session, we've kind of indicated that'd be a nice thing to have before we proceed. And so I'm willing certainly to put it on hold, not actively sell this property, but I want to make sure that's something that can go, go along with us, I guess.
The only thing that I, the only thing I don't know how to do this, and our attorney will probably need to answer it, is that if you declare it as no longer a public purpose but want us to hang on to it, that's fine, but I'm not, I've never undeclared property, so I'm not sure the process that you go through to undeclare it is surplus property.
The resolution you have in front of you tells you there's a couple different ways to proceed. One is you can say the property's not necessary for public use. The other is you can find that it furthers the public interest. If you look at this resolution and what, you know, this was built on, was a determination that it would further the public interest, that the sale of the funds, sale of the properties would build funds for workforce and affordable housing projects consistent with the city's 2017 Housing Needs Analysis. So when I was presented this, there was a rationale proposed for this sale, that we were going to build funds to develop workforce and other housing. The, the motion on the floor seeks to earmark funds from sale of one of these properties for a different purpose, so that's not recognized in this resolution. We'd have to change that. I understand the rationale. If you sell one parking lot, you logically spend the money for that, that you achieved getting, selling that parking lot to build a different parking lot. But again, you've got a resolution in front of you saying it furthers the public interest because we're going to use this for affordable housing and workforce housing projects. You're not necessarily hanging your hat on the not needed for public use angle if you say furthers the public interest. If it is needed for public use, you really shouldn't be selling it. So I, I guess, I, I think you could, it'd be best to pull it if you're not ready to make a finding about it today.
Without the earmark.
So just, just, I, I think if you remove it, as was in the proposed motion, just remove it from the list of properties to be sold, then you can take your time and figure out if it's feasible to put a parking lot on it. And then the function, you know, what we have to do is we just have to come back at a later time and do one of these resolutions to declare at that time that it furthers the public interest to dispose of it. I guess I, that would be my recommendation. I, I don't know, yes, you can pass a motion that it would earmark the funds if you wish to do that, but that, it's always subject to the budget process. So you can make that motion, but it's still going to be subject to that budget process, so...
I've heard that, would you want to amend the motion?
Sure, I, I think I should make it a little more simple. So I would amend it just to pull the, to approve the resolution, but to pull the property on Salasie Drive.
Mr. Ward?
I have, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so, motion second, discussion?
Do we have to take the first motion off?
It's just been amended.
So the, the Southeast Third is used and is in the interest of the public because it is a parking lot that does get used, and, you know, I don't think that selling one parking lot to build another parking lot, which we don't know, isn't, you know, now that it's gone, that's not an issue. But there's a pump station there, I think that's a pump station, right? And it does get used. I happen to live in that neighborhood. I get to see all the parking, all the cars parked in there. It absolutely gets filled up, and then, so I think even on those non-Kite festival days or those really high tourist things, if we had a sign at the river saying, hey, four minutes away is another parking lot, would help alleviate the pressure around kilos, around that subway, the motel right there that always gets jammed up with parking, like I think there's a lot of overflow, you know, kind of dangerous parking in that whole area because they simply don't know that you take a left going down Third Street and there's a parking lot right there. I think that's not advertised as well as it can be, and it absolutely gets used. Before I lived in that neighborhood, on those days, I would park, you know, I would park there to walk to D River. I mean, that's, that's how I got to D River because I knew that it would be packed, but now I just walk there from my house. But I think it's absolutely an overflow parking lot, absolutely is needed, and should be pulled in the best interest of this, of the people from being surplus property. So I'm against voting for your motion. You didn't amend it to take off the Southeast Third.
All we're voting on now is, are we talking about just the Salasie property? They're moving that.
But, but that would make it for sale, then?
That's what I'm saying.
He would want this to be added.
I want it...
Not to be for sale.
Pull, correct, which you amended it just to take off Salasie, so I'm voting against you in your motion.
Shall I amend again?
Well, only if you agree with him. If you like your motion as you made it.
If, if I could just...
His opinion he doesn't want it.
Just correct one thing, is that you can sell property that is needed for public use if you find that it furthers the public interest. Now, in this, in this case, you have a property that has a city pump station or some facility on it, plus a city parking lot. So certainly, and because it's subject, we need a partition, a portion of the property will, will not be sold because it's needed for public use. And your argument is that we need the parking lot for public use as well.
Yes.
And so what you're really saying is the motion should be, or what you would, what you would be interested in voting on would be a motion that approve the resolution taking, removing two properties, the Salasie property and the Third Street property.
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor?
And just so I'm clear, I think I'd heard you say southwest, but you didn't mean southeast.
Southeast, it's southeast, yeah. If I said southwest, I apologize.
I would like to amend my motion further.
Your honor, maybe it would be best to withdraw the motion, withdraw the second and start over?
Okay, I would like to withdraw my motion.
Withdraw the second. All right.
May I start again?
You certainly may.
Thank you. I lost my voice.
Or Mr. Hoagland, if you'd like to make the motion?
I'm ready.
Okay, do it.
I move to approve resolution 2017-17, but amend it to remove the property, properties on one Salasie Drive, tax lot 061135CB100, and the Southeast Third Street property, tax lot 071115AC6500.
Second. Motion a second, discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Wait, let me read a little.
Please, go ahead.
Well, sorry, I don't have the documents in front of me, thanks, I can read. But there's that piece of property that's on southwest, I'm sorry, north, northwest, maybe 14th, that's right where you get, go down to park the cars, there's this little, is that what that is? That piece of property that we own that's next to the motel?
That's not on this list.
It's not on the list. Well, a good thing, then.
We checked.
I got nothing for you.
All right. That's urban renewal property.
Got it. I was mixing apples and oranges, sorry.
Anything else, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you all for your patience on that. I'm just going to jump ahead here. Okay, special order of business, wastewater vehicle purchase crane truck.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we have, we've budgeted this year for a crane truck in the wastewater departments, for our collections department, but it's used by really all departments and quite a bit at the wastewater plant too. And so it's a truck with a flatbed on it and it has a crane on the back that lifts pumps out of our pump stations. And without it, we can't maintain our pumps. And it's actually been red-tagged for quite a while, so we had it budgeted for this year at $85,000. And so our recommendation, let's see. Our staff recommends council approve the purchase of a wastewater department crane truck, can't say that, in accordance with the government contract purchases from Gresham Ford and Pacific Trucks colors. And it's an OPRN contract, which means it's a state bid, so it's the best price that we can possibly get on that. And the truck itself is $84,235. And it's an F-550 four-by-two equipped with a stellar T-Max V2 painted white with hydraulic outriggers and, plus the crane. And then we're looking at an estimated surplus of the old equipment at $4,000. And then we have an explanation of the procurement of goods and services, which I won't read all of that, but it's there just for your information.
I have a quick question, it's confusing to me. It says, "This vehicle would replace a 1997 Chevrolet C3500 HD flatbed with a crane having 61,918 miles on it."
Yes.
Flatbed or the crane?
The, the flatbed.
Okay, and then it says, "In 4,033 hours," which I'm assuming is the crane, totaling 241,180 miles.
Yes.
I don't understand.
That's because they sit running, it's like a generator, you know, you can look at the runtime or the age.
Crane or the...
Well, no, you're looking at the total miles on it because it runs, the truck runs while they're using the crane.
Okay.
So it's running, so the miles and they...
Got it, like the police vehicles.
Don't match, right.
Okay.
Similar to, similar to our guzzler and, you know, different TV vans, different equipment like that.
Okay, and I'm going to see if I can guess what Mr. Henderson's thinking. Is there a way that we can share this with anyone? Is there a way to not be the exclusive owners of this property?
Well, before we...
How often are you using it?
All the time.
Okay.
Yeah, we use it, we use, we use it, so I have, the wastewater, the wastewater plant uses, they pride over it. So the wastewater plant uses it on a quite regular basis, so when the collection crew isn't using it, they go back and forth. And then it's also used for the water department.
Okay, three to five times...
And so we've been at a real, we've been at a real loss with that, not having it right now. Because we waited, we, we ended up having to red-tag the old one, it just essentially rotted away.
Red-tag meaning?
Meaning you can't use it anymore.
Okay.
So we've been without...
Don't speak government here, so.
Okay.
All right, so that answers my question, thank you.
I have a question, please.
Yes.
When was the 1997 vehicle purchased?
In 1997, I'm sure.
So if, if you take 4,033 hours divided by the last 20 years, divided by 12 months, divided by four weeks, it's like four hours, four hours a week?
Um...
But you use it all the time?
Well, we do, we have it at the wastewater plant, the water plant, so I'd have to come back with those, those figures.
Yeah, I just did 4,033 divided by 20.
I didn't ask.
Take that divided by 12, take that divided by four, and that's four hours a week. So I'm just curious if it's all the time, but then is it...
So if you have to rent this equipment, it rents for a very high price and it's not available here?
I'd imagine, absolutely.
Yeah, so it's, yeah.
Yeah, if you can...
I would have to, there aren't, there really aren't any available, we've been trying to, you know, rent them while we're, while this vehicle is waiting to be purchased.
For me, and this is something that I've struggled with, with a lot of requests, and I'm sure it's legitimate, I don't, I mean, the numbers are reasonable to me, but we're getting more information here than is in here.
Okay.
And, you know, I would love to be able to say, okay, we've looked at the rental costs, here's what it is.
Okay.
It makes it a whole lot easier to not only make a decision but also to explain to constituency why we had to buy this. Because exactly, here's the reality of it. Otherwise, I'm just going, well, I hope she's telling me the truth.
I'll bring it back to you, and it's, you know, I didn't get that from Willis, our vehicle maintenance person that puts these together for me.
Yeah, and just as a recommendation, because I think it's, as it moves through departments, it makes perfect sense to you.
Mm-hmm.
And everyone else, it's like, yeah, but then it comes to us and I've got to explain it on the street level to folks who don't deal with this every day.
Okay.
And I really, it is so helpful to have that information.
All right. I'll follow, I'll follow up with that after this.
Okay. So if there's no more questions, I guess we'll be looking for a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of a wastewater department crane truck for $84,235.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Yeah, I do have one question. Who do you get that from? Where does that type of vehicle come from?
It comes, it comes actually, this one was from the, let's see.
You have a custom made or is it just a standard crane?
No, they have to put it together, so it'll be about four months before we even get it. But it's Gresham Ford and Pacific Truck colors under the, let me give you the actual name, it's...
That's fine, I'm good.
Okay. It's OPRN, which is the estimated, let's see, they're, they're actually our state, it's a State of Oregon Procurement Information Network, OPRN, and so those are the, you know, best prices that you can get.
Like IT gets billed by different departments, would the use of this multi-department truck be billed accordingly? Or is it like, how, how would that look as far as who gets to use it on the books?
Yeah, the majority of the use is wastewater and wastewater collections and the wastewater treatment plan are all under the same budget.
Okay. But if in the event we needed a crane for something, the city could say, hey...
Absolutely. We, we do that across the board all the time at the back hose, every, almost every piece of equipment.
And then one follow-up, if I may, what are we doing now and until that vehicle arrives?
We're standing by, we're going to wait, wait, and, you know, if we have, if we have a real issue, then we'll bring a truck in from outside.
Okay, but see, that's my concern, is I've just been told that we're using it non-stop and it's, they're fighting for it, but now four months, okay, it's no big deal.
Well, it is a big deal. And so we will have, we will still probably have to rent something in the meantime.
Okay, again, that would...
Yeah, it just didn't...
It's so helpful to hear that or read it.
Okay. I'll make sure that...
Don't mean to bash it, but...
I'll make, no, I'll make sure you get a follow-up on it.
All right, appreciate it.
May I ask a question?
Please.
I don't know how to ask this in, not in direct way, but what took you so long to come and ask?
Well, it was budget...
I can answer that one.
Okay.
There's, there's two-part process, first of all is the budgets, we got into the new budget. The second of all, the second, first of all is the budget, we had to get into the budget. But then the second is that it originally came to me, and, but it's beyond my purchase authority, and so we, so there is, so we brought it back to put it onto the city council agenda, and that's why it's before you. It was a, it was a bit of an error on part, on our part where they, where it was thought that I could sign off on it, but it's beyond my purchase authority.
Took some time.
So it took some time.
Well, that's for another discussion time. I still am not in favor of your, your self-imposed limit, I'm not at all. But that's for another night. Any other discussion? No? Okay, hearing none? Roll call please.
Ward?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
De Yves.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, discussion, new urban renewal area district formation. You need a screen? No? Okay.
Hello, Mayor and Council?
Hello.
So this is really, per your request, when we had an economic development work session, which was July 24th, you all had asked staff to bring back a timeline and process to form another urban renewal district. And so you were aware of what the process was, and then to direct staff if you would like to proceed with exploring that idea. Basically, the information's outlined in your packet, I can go over it at whatever detail you'd like, but it'll take about a year and a half. The process is with staff reports, with pros and cons of different areas, and determine what your interest is, establish a district boundary, and develop a project list, do outreach to taxing districts, and, and then after formation, typically it's about three to 10 years before there's funding available. Sometimes that can happen shorter based on new legislation, but we haven't done any of that sort of thing for our current district. We've basically done bonding and then paid the bonds back. So if we were to form a new district or new districts, then we would have the opportunity to do things differently and more currently, with more current legislation. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have and just look to your direction if it's of interest to either have a work session or have staff bring back more information to a city council meeting.
Is there a map available? Did I miss it somewhere in the...
There aren't any maps here because I didn't want to have our staff team invest a lot of time in doing maps if it wasn't of interest to, to explore it.
Councilwoman?
Yes.
So I remember leaning away from the kind of restrictive map-ness of a, you know, urban renewal and being told that the economic development department, is that the right word? Which we just funded in this last budget committee season, would allow a more broader applicant pool of things that could happen. So the question is, is that these bonds that are issued to the urban renewal district, could those be applied, were applied to, applied from, I don't know the word, but applied from the economic development department, could they apply for those same bonds? And if so, would that have a less, you know, not a three to 10-year timeframe to have those funds available?
With urban renewal, it's, it's really a separate thing than the city budget. The reason why we're here talking to council about this is because council is the one who makes a decision of how to form or what to form. In that case, if you wanted to proceed, it would be out of the city's economic development budget that would go to the consulting services to pay for establishing a district. With the bonding that urban renewal uses, it's a completely separate thing. I'm sure you've heard me pipe in at different conversations about urban renewal is separate. So, so the bonding really is a discrete thing, it's, it's a tax increment financing tool and it is an economic development tool that the city is, within its authority, allowed to use to fund projects that would likely happen slower over time or not happen at all. So it's really, the reason why we're talking about it is, is just because it is a tool that's available for the city's economic development objectives.
Mr. Mayor?
Could that be applied by the economic development committee?
Mr. Mayor, I think if I might just, I think there's a clarification in what I believe you're asking.
On the microphone, please.
But what I believe that Council Hoagland is asking, can the proceeds from the current district be used to create a new district?
That's not what I'm asking.
That's not what you're asking, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
What is, what is the other title that you hold?
I, I'm, I don't really have a title, I'm working in economic development.
Economic development.
That is called the economic development department?
No, economic development is part of the urban, is part of, is being done by the urban renewal employees.
And I understand it's being, the work is being completed by the urban renewal employees, but this new economic development is a now-city-funded function, right?
It's a separate item in the budget, yes.
Right, separate than urban renewal.
Separate from urban renewal.
So my question is, is all the things that urban renewal does, the bonds, everything like that, could that also be done by the economic development by itself? Everything the same, but done by economic development?
No. The reason why urban renewal or TIF districts, tax increment financing districts exist is because they can do things that a city cannot do. So they can assemble property, they can sell property for different amounts that a city cannot. There are just different things that are allowed by urban renewal that are not. It's really your mechanism to do leveraging of money with other private partners.
Separate than the city.
Separate than city. So there, there's absolute crossover. When we talked about creating the budget for the city's economic development, it was to talk about things that were citywide rather than focus specifically on the current urban renewal district. So, yeah.
We can say this particular area of the city needs more help or has different issues than the rest of the city, than the rest of the economic development could apply funds for, so these areas need another...
Funding tool.
Right.
Yes. I hope, I hope I answered.
Absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
I'm going to, you know, just one second, I hate to step into parental roles here. I'm worried for your daughter, she's starving. No, she's tipping over the chair, I don't want her to fall off of that.
She'll, she won't.
If you could do me a favor and not, if you could sit on the chair, that'd be great, thanks. Because all I'm doing is watching that, waiting for the tumble. Thank you, go ahead.
Thanks, go on.
I'm sure she'll take care of it. Thank you.
She starts crying, it'll be all right.
She looks okay.
I'll throw it out, go ahead.
Okay, Mike, back to the urban renewal district. I'd be in favor of a work session because right now it just seems like a black box to me, I'm not quite sure parameters or parts of the city, or, and I know we've had some discussion about it, but I'm not comfortable with just moving forward with something. And so if we did have a work session, would you have information available for us to look at specific areas in the city and ideas of what that would mean and what type of bond it would mean? Could you give us more direction?
Yes, this is really just per your request, you asked for process and timeline, and so that's what this is, and then cost is also in here. And so with you understanding that it'll take a year and a half to two years to create a district, and the cost is about $30,000 with an additional $25,000 if you decided to explore doing a second area at the same time, then we can absolutely have a meeting that's more in-depth and I can go into greater detail about what a TIF district is, how it works. Of course, you've seen the, the end of how it's worked because our current district was set up in 1988, so we've had a long time, we're at the end of that district. I can give you more information about what we've done in this district, but more so some ideas about where you might find it useful to fund other projects in other parts of the city.
I think that'd be helpful.
Mayor, I would agree to advance this, and I think a work session makes sense. Looking at the schedule, it's pretty well laid out. Certainly the, I'm assuming, how soon the, the cost, consulting fees probably wouldn't come into play and then, until further down. I'm assuming you could give us or have in mind a couple of areas that might be legitimate or to be explored, urban renewal districts?
Yes.
Before we engage consultants or...
Yes, we would just talk conceptually about where there's need and where it might work, and then you all would have to decide at a formal council meeting if you want to make a motion about actually proceeding with consulting and creating a district, so.
Yeah, I'd say that'd go a long ways to move in this forward.
And I just have a, a quick question... And I just have a quick question, and we can take us up to a work session later. You said outreach to taxing districts. Can you give me an explanation?
There's a requirement in creating a district, or even doing an amendment to an existing district, which we have done a few times, and that is to, what they say, this is government speak, but confer and consult with your taxing districts. So, we go into a lot of depth about what the financial projections are and what the impacts would be, because the way...
To whom?
To the overlapping taxing districts.
Right, but who is that?
Who is that?
Who do you go to in particular?
Yeah, we have 10 of them, so it's all the elected officials that oversee those taxing districts. So, it'd be county commissioner, it'd be city council, which is kind of silly, because we'd be talking to you about what you want to do, but...
Again, and just so everyone's clear, I know, but I'm asking the questions that I'm going to get.
Sure.
So, again, I just want to kind of lay it out so people know what we're talking about.
It's the fire district, Devil's Lake Water Improvement District, the county, the school district is reimbursed by the state, so although there is a take from urban renewal from the school district, the state reimburses that, so there isn't any impact to the school districts. I can't remember all the other ones, but...
Health district.
Thank you, health district.
Fire, library.
So, this will have a big impact, should we move forward on a lot of people?
Yes.
And they should start paying attention to this?
Yes, absolutely, it's something to pay attention to, and we want to be completely transparent and accurate about what those impacts are. The, there are pros and cons, and so we'll have those outlined, and we can talk more about those.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then, we're gonna make a motion, or just let it roll?
I move to direct staff to hold a work session to explore new urban renewal areas.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion? We don't have to give a date certain, Mr. Appicello? No, just, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're none, motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. And, let's see, okay, seven, we're still doing seven. Authorize city manager to execute professional services agreement with FFA Architecture and Interiors for Lincoln City Police Facility Project.
You have before you tonight revised version of the scope of work, as prepared by FFA Architectures and Interiors, and based on the discussions that we had on Tuesday, during Tuesday's work meeting. Available to answer any questions if you have those.
Motion?
I move to authorize the city manager to execute the professional services agreement with FFA Architecture and Interiors in the amount of $877,591 with a 10% contingency or an amount not to exceed $965,350.
Second. Motion to second, discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I have three things. One is that the request that I made for some lead equivalency language... I think we're losing our city manager.
I'm looking for that. I'm listening.
I know, it's in the list. And the answer that AFF gave to that question, is sure they can do that, it's not in the scope, and when we were talking about it, I was asking it for it to be in the scope and to make that adjustment upfront, rather than making it be a change order later?
Okay, on the first page, the question for you is, is this sufficient? The very first highlight in yellow, it says, "The A and E team will track the project using lead guidelines. A specific lead equivalency target will be identified in the early phases of the project." So, the question for you is, is that sufficient?
Trying to catch up, sorry, I closed it.
Based upon whose determination?
It's on packet page 84.
You have other questions?
Yeah, sorry, I lost track of it. And the other one was the percent for art, I don't think we quite finished that discussion. And then, the third was the 9.1 earthquake ready, they said that they go to the, you know, the building standards, and it's a little bit stronger for a building like a police building, but I didn't feel like my question was answered, that because we are expecting in the next 50 years, 40% chance of the big one, which is a 9.1, will it withstand that? And I don't feel like I've been answered.
The question that they gave in response to, the answer they gave in response to your question is, is two-part. First, they build up to the standards that are required for public buildings for earthquake standards.
Right.
If you want to go beyond that for either an earthquake, or a tsunami, or something else, then they are happy to do that, but will be an additional fee, and that fee is not spelled out at this time. If you would like them to propose an amendment to this for that additional fee, I can ask them to do that.
That's what I thought I was asking before, because I think, because we know this is going to happen, and quite frankly, because we're building the building with that knowledge, if we don't do it, that's not a good service to our communities.
Ultimately, that would be something that the council would need to instruct us to do, because it's different from the scope of work in here. If you would like to add that on to it, that's fine, but that's up to the council collectively.
Mr. Mayor, just a question of my own on that. But would that not fall under that category of getting input from the community, and then, remember, it then looks at our budget, so that they would give a price and balanced with our budget? So, you know, we have a budget that we've talked about for this, and so, you know, I think it would behoove us in our sessions with the architects, that the counselor bring that up and put it in. I mean, I think that's how we do, because we're trying to keep it in that, what, $9.5 million, $10 million budget? So, which, heck, we could hang draperies on the walls, you know, if it fits in there. So, I guess I'm not as concerned about this, changing the scope at this point, or the agreement, because we've already, you know, we get additional chances to input our desires, and I think yours is valid.
I, my reasoning for asking for these three things to be kind of figured out upfront is because if you add it on later, it's going to cost more.
Add it on later, it's going to cost more. They haven't done anything yet, and they won't do anything.
But it's not in their scope of work.
Just a second, guys, we're not going to do a work session here. If you have a question, get the chair's attention. Are you finished with what you had to say, Mr. Anderson?
Sounds good to me.
Finished? Okay, I don't mean to stop you, but I just, I don't want to get in the back and forth here at the council meeting. Okay, so, I probably forgot where we are, we have a motion to second, we're still in discussion. Thank you. Anything from you, sirs, madams? Yes?
On Phase 1, under scope of services, is that Phase 1 scope was removed, I guess it was staff-initiated, but it cost $10,000, and so I wanted to know, at the back of the packet, it says zero, but the total amount is still $800 and some thousand dollars, which is inclusive of that $10,000, so $10,000 didn't really turn to zero.
I think it's $10,000 less, I believe it was $887,000.
Okay. Because I thought I compared the two, and they were the same numbers, but okay.
Is that something you can verify?
I can verify that.
And my other question was, we added two more, I guess, meetings. There were 12 meetings, and now there are 14 meetings, so I don't know if Phase 1 was really removed. But anyway.
You check that for us?
I'm checking to see if I can find that now.
Anything else? Counselor Casper? Down here?
I've got something.
Counselor Ward?
My concern is that when we, I mean, this is an opportunity, a once-in-50-year opportunity, and I found the report, not the report, but the, I guess, the report that he gave us difficult to understand, and there's a learning curve there for the average layman, and it's going to take some time before the council gets even with the staff. And part of my concern is, the staff has exclusively worked on this project without the city council, so the council is pretty far behind as far as understanding how these things work. And right now, we're working on a staff or administration-down concept, and I would really prefer to see a community up, so we get the, the community input should be one of the first things that we have. And so, and I think it's important that the community move at the same pace as the council, as the staff do, so that we all have equal information, that we all have understanding, and that our input actually has a chance to be input into the process. So, that's my concern.
Just to take something off of the city manager's plate, it was verified, yes, the $10,000 was removed, but we still have two extra meetings.
Yes.
So, still work to do.
Counselor Anderson is a questioning look.
I thought I was listening to Counselor Ward, but I don't know what you said. Your concern is the public and council, everybody being involved in this process?
Yeah, it's a community process, we're talking about community policing, that makes it a community process.
So, and I agree. How's that impact this agreement?
It doesn't. I just, just put it out there.
Since the motion on the table is to sign the agreement or not, that's all I mean.
Well, maybe we want to have another workshop before we sign the agreement. I'm just, this is a chance for people to talk and air their opinions.
Mayor, I'm still, and I apologize, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm trying to figure out what it is that your concern is, because my understanding of our agreement with these folks is they have a huge amount of outreach to the various communities, of which should hopefully satisfy your concerns and get people involved.
It depends.
We're not going to have those until we sign the agreement.
That's right. It depends, outreach goes two ways. One, where you involve the community, and they actually have input that matters, that has a chance of being considered, and the other is having community or output that just simply tells the community what you've done, and explained it. And out of the two, I prefer a more organic style of doing business than the way that I see the plan on this, even though there's a lot of meetings, it was difficult for me, and I'm sure maybe the other counselors, to even understand what was being proposed.
Again, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to argue with you, Mr. Ward, because they weren't proposing anything. They...
Well, they didn't write that out for sport, I mean, there was a reason that was given to us.
At our work session, we went through the scope and different processes, and they were very clear, at least for me, and on their PowerPoint, that showed where they gather information, and all that is long before any scratching on the napkin or schematics happen, or floor designs happen. So, I'm just not understanding your concern, because I do understand your desire to involve the community, applaud it. I don't understand how having a work session, I mean, we've hired these folks.
We have, yeah.
This consumates hiring these folks, and...
I mean, if we have concerns, certainly this is the forum to have, to air your concerns, that's what I'm doing.
And so, I thank you both for your input and thoughts on that, and good. Anyone else? Okay, here we go. We have a roll call.
Do you, a motion?
Yeah, do we do a motion second already?
Motion to approve this agreement?
Yes. Who seconded it? It was Susan, and seconded by Counselor Anderson. All right, ready?
Please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Holton?
Yes.
Inte? Yes. Casper?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you much. Okay, we went over eight, nine, and 10, we're at request for appointment. Parks Board applicant, Camilla Arlet. Counselor Walkie? Maybe I could start? We'll just, we had a scheduled discrepancy, we kind of missed each other in the night on the appointed time, so Counselor Walkie has physically interviewed with Ms. Arlet. I'm just going to give my recommendation, simply based on the strength of her credentials and application.
And she had, I interviewed her in person on Thursday, August 31st. She has a very strong application, lots of community involvement, she's lived here in Lincoln City for two years. Her, her sense of community and wanting to help was reinforced by the meeting I had with her. She's highly recommended by her references, and I heartily recommend her for appointment to the Parks Board.
Normally, I wouldn't do what I'm doing tonight, but it was just, it was one of the strongest applications I've seen, I had no qualms whatsoever. So, motion?
I move to appoint Camilla Arlet to the Parks Board.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion? Go ahead.
Two vacancies? Is that, I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, one withdrawal? Yeah, yeah.
So, we're filling one of the two vacancies, and there was only one applicant for that?
Yes. Yes. Sole applicant.
I just have a question, does she have a background in working with or volunteering with Parks Boards before she moved here? Or is it just a personal interest? I don't, it doesn't matter.
She was a ski instructor and ran a summer bike program as ski area.
Right, and this was, she has a strong outdoor connection.
Right. Also, has been involved with some other volunteer programs.
Anyone else? No? Oh, yes. Okay. So, motion to second, discussion's over, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Holton abstaining. All right, and request for appointment to Library Board Matthew Max Horton.
Counselor Casper, and I interviewed Mr. Horton on Tuesday, August 29th. He has background in... Yeah. And he is a current volunteer at the Driftwood Public Library. Very involved in publications for many, many years.
And he's very enthusiastic about what an inspiring library we have. And he's very enthusiastic about, um, what an inspiring library we have. Uh, he's very proud of this library. I think he's a great advocate.
Okay, so looking for a motion?
I move that we, um, accept the nomination of Matthew Max Horton to the Library Board.
I'll second. Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. We are broken here, yeah.
I had one other, um, comment about committees, if I could stick it in here.
Please.
Um, I noticed that the Budget Committee will have three openings as of the end of the year. And I know last year, we didn't start advertising until the, the end of the year, and it was hard to get those appointments made before the Budget Committee. I'm hoping that we can start that process a little earlier this year.
Okay, um, City Manager, City Attorney reports.
So I have three things. The first is from the Cascade West Council of Government. I'll just read this. Um, the Cascade West Regional Consortium is organized and, as an American, uh, Oregon nonprofit corporation. The CWRC mission is to address community and economic development opportunities and barriers while concurrently working for environmental and social good. The primary focus of the CWRC has been wetlands mitigations effort and work while continued addressing wetlands. At its January 20th, 2017 meeting, um, the CWRC approved amendments to its bylaws. These amendments included broadening the economic development focus and changes to its members, membership composition, which now includes all of the Oregon Cascade West Council of Government membership jur, member jurisdictions. The Council of Government Board of Directors approved that amendment at its May 17th, 2017 meeting. As a member jurisdiction of, uh, the Council of Government, you may appoint a primary and alternate member to the CWRC board. Those have traditionally been city coun, those have been city council members.
And I apologize, you said you had three?
No, there's two, a primary and an alternate member.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay. What would you like from us tonight?
Uh, selection of an alter, of a primary and an alternate member, so I can report back to them.
Okay. Do you need nominations?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Walkie, do you have any other information on this, since you're the contact representative? 'Cause I can tell you from the area of, uh, Commission on Transportation, nothing's filtered down with the Council of Governments.
Right, right. And, um, no, I don't have any further information. I apologize.
I don't understand what it is that there, is it wetland, uh, or is it economic development?
I, I can't tell you more than what I've read.
I, I don't understand it.
Both.
Huh?
Both.
Well, then perhaps a clarification before more information?
More information? 'Cause I don't hear anyone jumping up and saying, "Yeah," so maybe that would help. Okay, with counsel? Yeah, okay. Goodbye, Ron.
I have two other items, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I know you said three. Okay, there you go.
First is a reminder that, uh, tomorrow, uh, this is from the Samaritan North Lincoln Hospital. We invite you to celebrate with us at the ceremonial groundbreaking for the new Samaritan North Lincoln Hospital. Program begins at 3:30 PM, uh, Tuesday, September 12th, Main Parking Lot, um, 3043 Northeast 28th Street. So, uh, just make that note for your calendars. And then one other calendaring item is that, uh, your next scheduled work meeting is for next Monday at 2:30. We have two agenda items that are on that. The first is, uh, of the branding campaign that we have been working on. We will be giving you a presentation with some ideas and some, uh, for both logo slogans and updates on, on the branding, uh, information. If you're unable to be there, um, I can send you that, the information. They, they're, they're updating the PowerPoint that they will be using. And the second is that if you recall earlier in the year, um, you had instructed the staff to look at, uh, the plastic bags with the idea of banning those, and we will be giving you a report on that as well.
Thank you very much. Ms. Strappatella?
I have nothing.
Okay. All right. Uh, the, the, the actions of base, any based on work session or executive session? None? Additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? Anyone care to come up and say a word? Saying none? Uh, announcements or comments by City Council? Ms. Hoagland?
I recently was able to visit the 500-year-old tree at Cape Perpetua. There's a little half-mile, um, hike there from the visitor's station. You pay a fee and you go walk this, along this creek, and you see this 500-year-old tree. And it's very nice, and, you know, it's great. Well, we also have a very old Sitka spruce in Lincoln City, and nothing is around it. There's kind of no selling point of it, there's nothing like that. So I would like to ask to see if we can do something similar to that of like, hey, just so you know, there's this beautiful playground, and right over there, four minutes away, is a 400-year-old tree. You know, the, the hike in Cape Perpetua, you know, you had to go up and down, and it's dirty and muddy and all that stuff, and it's not necessarily that way. And I don't know who maintains that park in Regatta Park, or, you know, what the deed restrictions are and all that stuff, but, um, it's right here, it's right here. So, I mean, I think it'd be a great, it's a great thing to put out there, and I've, you can't even look to see where can you go see a 400-year-old tree? I mean, there's just not that kind of information out there. But we have it, and so why don't we say, hey, for those of you that want to see this humongous tree, it's right here in Lincoln City.
Well, as we don't have a Parks Director yet, is it something we could ask Mr. Chandler to investigate?
Well, there's, I mean, there's upkeep on it. I mean, there's some of the, some of it is cleared back, and I don't know who does it.
Right, but you're talking about signage and pathways.
Something, so, something.
Anything in this country, council, and say, hey? Anderson, you have something down there?
Well, my, always my immediate thought is, you know, we, we have a Parks Committee, and we have a chain of command of where Parks, you know, goes to. Plus, we're also, as a city, we're a tree city. Um, planning might be able to give us more information of what that means, and maybe there's a category under being a tree city that, um, would assist in that recognition kind of stuff.
That's great. I mean, yeah.
Put it back on Ron's shoulders, and just at least find out who, when, what, and bring it to us?
Or just give it to them, you know? I mean, it's, if they're interested.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not for anything that's, you know, information as far as this is concerned, you know?
So, you good with that, Ron?
Good, sir?
Okay. Anyone else up and down the line? Counselor Walkie? Counselor, read it out?
No, the, yes, one more.
Go ahead, please.
The work session times from being 2:30, not being at 2:30. And to see, I know before it was, you guys voted on it, but, you know, I'm working at that time, and if there's, if you guys are interested in having it another day at a later time, you know, I think also people can't attend because they too are working at that time, and so it limits the public participation or the public, um, being able to be in that and relying solely on the video part of it, so. I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not saying it.
So, if I can, Mr. Mayor, is, is Monday a bad time, or is the 2:30 a bad time?
2:30 is the...
Is, so you need to move something off to more non-work hours?
Correct.
After four, after five?
After five.
After five? And any day of the week? Personally, I, I'm more concerned with getting you there, um, because the work sessions really aren't open to, they're open to the public, there's no participation. Um, so whether they watch it in person or video, but I, I would be interested in getting you there. So what you're, do you have a day, a time?
No, I'm, if I'm gonna say...
Yes, do.
A, after five o'clock, um, any day of the week is fine. Obviously, Monday or...
So, do you, if, if we stay with Mondays? Ben's trying to stay with Mondays?
Correct, that would be fine.
So, next Monday at what time?
5:15?
Yeah, no, yes, I, yes.
Could we make it 5:16?
Which clock? No, or is 5:30? I don't know yet.
I, I just assumed.
5:30.
Ruin an evening, then ruin a midday, so. Okay, works for me. Is that good by everyone? Okay, got that right? Okay.
Do we have a limit on this? I mean, 5:30 to approximately two hours, a couple hours?
Yeah, I think that's something, too, we were gonna talk about at some point about, since we had that marathon meeting about establishing limits for our time, but, uh, I guess I'm gonna let everyone have their say first, then we can bring it out. Uh, Counselor Walkie, you were done?
Correct.
Counselor Walkie?
Excuse me. In late July, we had a woman come talk to us about her water being shut off. Has that been addressed?
It has.
Thank you.
Her water stayed on. Her water stayed on.
Could I interrupt a second on that? Um, 'cause, and we had this private, a citizen come forward and, and offer to pay that.
That's correct.
And they, he did pay that himself, right?
That's correct. And there was one other item that was taken care of by the owner.
I understood that. Very cool. Thank you.
A very giving community we have. I'm wondering what the situation is at Northwest 35th Court and parking on the beach.
What are you asking?
Has there been any further discussion with state parks? Um, I know there were some problems.
The last communication that, um, you mean as far as prohibiting parking, as far, as far as people driving up and down the beach? The last communication I have as far as parking or driving down onto the beach, that will continue. Um, we haven't, we have notified them, though, that, uh, we have had problems of people going beyond the boundaries of where they should be.
It's also dangerous when they enter and exit the beach. That's not good access point.
Okay. May I follow up on that question? Um, so, I've just been kind of following that one on the peripherals. It's up to the state to say whether people can drive their cars on that beach. There's the section of road that leads to that point. Is that still a city street, or is that a pub, or is that under the state's control? Because the city say, no, you can't drive your car here.
I do believe that the access to the beach, that drive access belongs also with the state in, in how it is regulated.
Okay, and then we cannot create a barrier on our own to that access?
Not that I'm aware of.
Strappatella?
Um, I, I guess it depends on the particular access. So, I'm not sure whether or not we have a deed to that, or it's, uh, right of way. I think we'll have to look into it.
Okay. I'm sorry, Counselor Walkie?
That's okay. My concern is that pedestrians and vehicles are both using the same pathway. The vehicles are not able to traverse that at a slow speed that's safe for pedestrians to be.
I think Councilwoman Anderson had a question, if you're okay with that?
Yeah, Ms. Walkie, uh, I did notice in Compliment, I guess, streets where they've got temporary signs of slowed down the traffic there at 25, and I've heard from citizens that's much appreciated. And I noticed they're still up. I think originally they were maybe for the eclipse, but it's...
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd like some on Logan Road, too. The thing I have of concern is, I was looking at the Public Arts Committee meeting minutes. Um, one of the items on their minutes was that they would present the committee's decision to hire people to prepare the public art master plan. I don't believe it's the public arts committee's ability to hire people.
It would be their recommendation.
Right. I think their minutes should reflect that, and I believe it's a staff person who does minutes, so that needs to be corrected. I think that's all.
Okay, Counselor Casper?
Um, yes, recently, the library, Driftwood Libraries, friends of the library gave a ADA water fountain to the library, and this is very helpful for bicyclists going through because they're able to fill their water bottles. And lo and behold, Travel Oregon has awarded that facility, the library, to be a bike-friendly stopping point because they also have, um, access to charged cell phones, and they're getting locks for their bikes, which they will be, um, also renting to patrons for, um, bike use. So I think that's a excellent recommendation from our library.
Okay.
Sorry, I did try and...
Okay, please. Uh, read it out, Counselor Casper? Okay, go ahead.
I believe we, um, received some correspondence from the League of Oregon Cities about a scholarship fund.
Uh-huh, it was more funding that they would apply to, I believe.
They were asking for a contribution to the, their scholarship fund.
Right, right, okay, you're right, yes.
We budget city council money for city councilors to go to trainings, and, um, last few years, we have not been using much of that budget. Wondering if we could contribute a little bit of those funds to help smaller cities who don't have the funds.
All right. Um, did you all receive? Give us a look at that letter afterward, so we all know what we're talking about? Counselor Anderson?
Yeah.
You look, I don't know what you look perplexed.
Perplexed, yeah.
Ready to attack, I don't... Did you have any?
Yes, I, I read the, uh, I don't know, the minute I say I'm really not interested in funding that, uh, you know, I'm a bad guy, um, but I'm not interested in funding that. Um, I, I think, I'm glad we have a budget for it, and we need to continue budget to educate our own. And I, I guess I would just assume, um, you know, if it's burning the hole in our pocket that we, we get reach down beyond council and get other people educated in leadership opportunities in the city, that we take care of Lincoln City residents and future leaders and that kind of stuff. But that's just me.
Mr. Mayor?
All done? Counselor Walkie?
Yeah, I appreciate the conversation.
Unless you have a question with her?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask it if, um, there's any way to know if there's a real need for this, if people are requesting, you know, the funding, or, um, 'cause I can't remember.
I read in the letter that there was a need.
Did they say how much they're asking for? I can't remember.
Well, I think they said basically, here's what we have provided, but not necessarily here's the need.
Five percent.
Yeah, but, yeah, that was the little stipend they wanted, but, um, um, if I remember right, I don't know how much I remember. They said, well, we gave a $1,200, and we get this much, this much, and this much. But there wasn't anything that said we had to do it. It just says we anticipate.
I just wanted to have the discussion.
No, no, I appreciate it, yeah. So, I, I guess, if you want to, I'm not seeing a lot of, what do you think, Counselor Walkie? You want a motion on that, or no? You don't have to? Okay, that's fine, I don't hear anyone.
I just have a suggestion. Or would you like to find out a little bit more about it and come back, like, with a specific request, rather than it being who knows how much and for what city?
Is it something we could, uh, impose upon you to find out about? If there's, what the need is from the League of Oregon Cities? I think that would be helpful. If you'd like me to. Yeah, I'm not a big fan of it, 'cause it's, if it's that important, raise the money. No offense to our League of Cities friends. Counselor Casper, you're up.
I don't have too much to say, other than, um, city manager gave me some information regarding Regional Broadband Summit, and I think I would like to attend the video conference in Toledo on September 21st.
Could you expand on that?
Um, well, this...
Is this gonna be open to the public?
No, this is, this is not ours. This is, we having our own. Um, this is from the State of Oregon. It seems like we're the leader. And, um, this is by invitation only. It's in Albany. Um, there'll be partners there from, uh, Emergency Technologies, Lane County Regional Fiber Consortium, Executive Director for ICERT, and the Chief Technology Officer from the State of Oregon. So, um, everybody's beginning to talk about broadband and how it can improve our communities. So this is kind of ex... So, this is kind of exciting, since we'll be addressing that ourselves on Saturday.
I certainly appreciate you taking lead and following up on this. It's very, very helpful.
I do plan to attend that in Albany.
Okay.
So, you could write with me.
Okay, great.
Do you think, Councilor Anderson?
Do you need funding? Is there funding with that?
No, it's part of our, our council.
Yes, okay.
Our council government's board meeting, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of things. One, just to acknowledge, today is September 11th, and remembering 2001, the lives lost, and certainly the valor of the, so many first responders at that 9/11 incident.
Yes, sir.
And then, secondly, I've, are gonna be giving this wad of paper to Kate and ask her to scan it and send it to all of us. It's a real nice recap of the transportation bill that was passed by the legislature, and as you know, I, one of the committees on the Cascade, or the Council of Governments is the Cascade West Area Commissions on Transportation, of which I sit. But this is a lot of frequently asked questions regarding the bill, where the money is, how it's applied, because it's, in fact, kind of unusual for us as a state to finally come up with some money towards transportation, and I, I found this to be very helpful, and we'll, rather than share it with you in paper, get it to you electronically and get that out.
Thank you.
The other thing I have is, is Ron has reminded the new hospital groundbreaking tomorrow at 3:30. Also, tomorrow night, for those that are interested, there's actually a school board meeting in Lincoln City at Ocean Lake Elementary at 7:00 PM. And again, being a countywide school district, it's always nice when those other electeds come to our community. I'll be attending and supporting them, but also knowing more about our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Three things. One, apologize for the, my email to you guys this last couple, couple days. I'd given Ron my copies of the questions, but unfortunately, my own personal notes got mixed in with them. That's why it looks so crazy when you open that up. So, anyway, yeah, at least I didn't say anything terrible about anyone. Twenty-five years ago, and I don't know when it changed, but we used to have, when someone irrigated a lot, there was a deduction made for that in the summer, and it's quite easy to, to figure out how much someone's using for irrigation. And currently, if someone uses water for irrigation, it also choose, choose, shows a sewer side as well, so they're paying for a sewer service that's, they're not, they're not getting. And I'm kind of wondering if there's a feeling among the council that, you know, to me, that's, that's not, that's not a right thing. If they're not using the service, they should not be paying for it. And so, does the council have any feelings on that, besides you, Mr. Anderson? You're on timeout. I'm sorry, I was just joking.
That's an old subject, just for your information, and one that we have passed, have not been able to come up with. So, always looking for an idea, a couple of the, the answers to the problem is get two meters, buy a meter, and use one at your house, which you have, and then the other for, if it's outside irrigation, so you can track it. The other have been suggestions of averaging, you know, winter months and stuff. That got thrown out, kind of because so many second homes, and, you know, there's a high usage of water in the summer, so. So, I, I'm open. I think there are folks, I, I guess, even if once we distinguished it, identified it, because someone chooses to, I, I guess they're billing, they're billing for water anyway, so it's the sewer aspect that you'd forego, yeah.
I think the assumption is, is that you're using equal parts sewer and water, isn't it?
Now, yeah, now. But it, I'd be interested in putting it on a work session table, if that's what you're suggesting, to try to, you know, look at some.
Make it equitable.
Yep.
That was number two.
That's just me.
Anybody else have feelings on that?
I'd like to see that on a work session.
All right. And so, the next one, and I don't know if we ever came to a decision, I don't think we did, but, uh, speed limit reduction along particularly Coast, down into Canyon Drive, where there's no room for pedestrians there at all. We still have a 25 mile an hour speed limit. And I was wondering, Ron, if you had, had found out any more about that?
Not more than what I've told you, and that's that ultimately it's regulated by the state. They, let me see if I can remember the information. You can go down as low as 15 miles per hour, but those are very rare. They're usually associated with an alley. They have some regulations, I can resend those to you if you want me to pursue that. It would be petitioning the state, and, and they would evaluate that, make that determination. But it's rare that they're gonna go below 25 miles an hour.
Well, you already have a reduced speed limit, I think, down in Nelskott, don't you? Yeah, so somehow that happened.
Okay.
And for good reason, too. I mean, it's really peppered with people.
We do have rogue citizens, I'm not sure.
If I can interrupt, because I remember talking with, with ODOT when they had their meeting out at Faith Baptist concerning the interchange work up there at East Devils Lake Road, and my concern was 45 seemed to be an excessive amount of speed in that area. And they basically said, yeah, you could, you can petition us and, you know, present your stuff, and things can be changed. So, I'd be on board with, you know, what you're recommending, and a couple other places to boot, so maybe we can get together in another work session. Pick our maps and say, here's what we think. I, I think there's a lot of room for improvement in our speed limits.
If I could add a traffic light at the Niatus post office, I know I'm gonna get killed one of these days.
Okay, but we're still on Mr. Ward's. Okay.
But, Mr. Mayor, could, staying on the speed limit? If I'm not mistaken, that there was a piece of legislation this last session that our legislature passed, specific for Portland, that allowed Portland to make the decision on some streets. And I asked our representatives, why would you do it for one and not for all? And the answer I got back is, because nobody else asked. So, one of the thoughts, since we have a every-year legislative assembly, our own representatives could submit a similar or attachment to existing law, and, you know, add to or amend that concept to take it out of the hands of ODOT and give it to the municipalities to regulate their own city speeds, street speeds, other than 101.
Can I add something to that? I've also noticed on Coast, if you turn on your headlights, it's very helpful, and even if you had maybe a little sign, lights on for safety, that really helps coming around the corners, and especially I noticed, like, over the Labor Day weekend and when it's really busy, it helped a lot.
Oh, I'm sensing Mr. Ward has opened up something we'd like to discuss more. Would be wrong?
Sounds great.
Goodbye, you, Councilor.
All right.
Okay, anything else? Anything else, sir? Is that it? Are you done, Kip?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Please.
I, I also wanted to remember 9/11, and I wanted to ask a, a follow-up question for one of our projects, which was the LID on Southeast 36th. We have any progress on that?
Ask our Public Works Director to come and address that one.
Okay.
I believe our start date for the sewer LID project on, it's actually Northeast 36th Street, will start within a couple of weeks, and it's, the contractor is saying that it'll only take about two to three weeks to finish. So, it'll be done before winter, and we've had a few people come in already to sign up.
I guess? That's it? Anyone else? Okay. Yeah, I hadn't thought about talking about September 11th, 2001, but it, it was one of those days that not only, you know, it was haunting and horrible, but my wife was there in Washington DC, and the utter panic of not being able to get ahold of somebody when they're in these, these dire circumstances. And I, I think about that whenever we have these natural disasters now, and listening to, I had a friend who is living in Florida now, who we're getting daily, or minute-by-minute updates, basically, up on Facebook until power went out, and just that, I just want everyone to know, we're, we're all thinking of you, whether you're Houston, or throughout Florida, or Cuba, or anywhere affected by these places. It's that common humanity that, you know, touches us all deeply, and I thank council members for bringing that up, and it's, it's a tough time. A lot of time spent in prayer, and so, I guess I have nothing else to say on that. Oh, the Imagine Lincoln City. While it's, it's terrific that we have that there, it's, I hate to print more stuff, but there's nothing that says what that is, what it does, where to go. If we could have a little website address tagged on that, that would be uber helpful. And then, I just wanted to, and I don't want to get into discussion tonight, because, Mr. Appicello, you said we'd probably be having a work session concerning the Smith versus City in Lincoln City. In an executive session, we'll discuss that. But we had a motion back, I don't have the date in front of me. It was when we were rejecting this offer of settlement, and to offer, and to authorize Council Yen Schmidt to pursue common agreement. And I just wanted, if maybe when we talk about that, you can talk about this, and so we're up to speed on that. Oh, celebrate recovery tomorrow night, Faith Baptist Church. I'll be cooking dinner there. It's every Tuesday night, 6:00 PM. It is an outreach program for, similar to a 12-step, so if you have any issues with alcohol, drugs, anything like that, or you know somebody who could be helped by that, we also serve the community a hot meal. You don't have to come there for any help unless you're just hungry and you need something to eat, so I always feel privileged to, to participate in that. With that, may God bless you all, may God bless Lincoln City, may God bless the United States. We are adjourned. And it's quarter to eight. Rock on, people.
I'd like to.